Session order, first up is the art wall. Anyone wanna pipe in on this subject?
If I can, just real quick, Mayor.
Yes.
Avery Yujura asked when our next meeting was and told him it was today. He said he'd make it, but now he can't. So, there's a very minimal sign that's in place, and I'll leave it at that.
I did see the sign, I did talk to him when he was down there. He said some of the concerns that I think the council has. So, I think the art escaping the wall and coming onto the face of the tunnel is certainly an issue that I'm not happy with.
I wasn't, I wasn't under the impression that maybe I was just wrong, but I didn't know that it was going to go outside of the tunnel. The whole wall on the outside going down Memorial Park here. And I'm not real crazy about that.
Give the people a little bit of credit. I mean, there is no signage saying where the boundaries are or anything. I don't think anything malicious was done. I think that it was just not well put as far as the original signage. If we correct that, I don't, I don't think it'll be a problem personally.
Well, he was gonna have a website with all the requirements and all the instructions and all that on it too. Is that not happening or I don't know what?
He's got a Facebook, he's got a Facebook page.
Apparently nobody's following whatever his rules were because some of the things are obviously being broken, like painting on the face of the wall. And as far as I'm concerned, this letter we got with our package tonight, I, I agree completely with. I don't think that, you know, calling it art is a broad definition of the term art. I see art as when you're coming out of Fremont, coming in this direction from downtown on the, excuse me, on the south side of the road, there's like four billboards. And on that, they have this beautiful, just a huge mural picture of countryside setting with barns and farms and barnhouses and streams and corn and crops. And to me, that's art. What I see down there is just a mess. It's not art. It looks, I think that we made a mistake in allowing this. And I didn't really want to approve this in the first place, but everybody's so worried about it. Well, okay, I'm gonna give it a shot. But in my opinion, we oughta put it to a vote on our tonight's council meeting and stop this thing right now because it's, it's a mess. And all I hear is complaints about it. And I can just imagine this new business going up in the Priton Ed's parking lot there. Those people are gonna look out, get out on their deck and have to look at that stuff on the south facing wall. And it shouldn't be on the north facing wall. And everything getting crossed out and bad words are being used and then crossed out. And it's just a conglomerated mess. And in my opinion, I hate it, period. So, I'd like to see us vote on this and get it out of there and get it painted over as soon as possible. Because it looks like some of the words on the wall, the one I saw yesterday when I walked through there, saw the word that it, that's what it looks like to me.
Scott, can you clarify something for me? When we voted to approve this, did we not vote to approve the tunnel and the wall heading towards the chamber building?
I don't know if we were very specific in any type of motion, but I think the, definitely the general understanding was that the wall's in the tunnel and maybe further out, you know, as long as it was all the walls. I don't think there was any contemplation that it would be on the north, I'm sorry, in the south facing walls and on the bridge itself. I think that probably went beyond all of our expectations.
I agree, there's.
And on the north facing wall too, same thing on the bridge.
Yeah, on the bridge, yes.
Yeah, and, and on the wall to the left, if you're going south.
I, I agree that something needs to be done. And since it was called, called an art wall when we were talking about it, I guess I was thinking of my interpretation of art.
Me too.
And what's down there is not art to me. So, you know, I know we can't vote on anything tonight because there's not enough advance notice to the public. But I, I think we definitely need to tweak the rules if we're gonna leave it or just, you know, do away with it altogether. But if we're gonna tweak the rules, I would definitely like to see them say, no lettering, no numbering, and no symbols. Art is, it's pictures or whatever. I, I don't consider what's down there art. So, that's just my opinion.
I wonder how much gray area we get into if we start, like say, no letters, numbers, or symbols. I, I know with the art signs, we, we have the First Amendment rule. If you have to read it to say if it's allowed or not, then you're in violation. And I wonder if similar stipulations fall into place here. I think what bothers me the most is where it starts extending vertically. Up, up on the bridge, that's, that's gotta be a, a no-go, you know, area. You gotta get that, what's there off and make clear that that's, that's off limits going forward. Below that, I guess it's still open to discussions.
I think we should at least give a chance to get the signage up and people be aware of what the actual rules are. If there's coming down there without looking at Facebook pages, there's really.
There's no expectation there for them. And, and once again, I mean, just go to Art Prize once and you can make a determination yourself what's art and what's not art. Again, art's in the, in the eye of the artiste. We may not like it, we may, it's not ours to, it's ours to like or dislike, but it's the artiste, or the artist that puts it up there. I concur with, with Sean and Keith that, you know, the, the facing walls, yeah, that, that, that's our bad for not having the signage up there to say, yeah, we aren't gonna put it there. Take it down, fix it, and just let it go through the summer and see how it happens. It ends, I mean, it's, they're not gonna paint when it's freezing outside because the paint doesn't dry, but it may dry, I guess. But just let it roll for a while, see what happens.
Who's responsible for painting over what's there then? That is obviously agreed upon that is, is, should not be there on the south facing wall and the north facing wall. It was supposed to be on the walls of the tunnel. And I guess it was a gray area on the park going north out of the tunnel. It was, there was no line or anything where to stop or anything like that. But somebody has to be responsible for that. And I would think that the person that came to us with this great idea, I mean, if he's graduating and he's gonna turn it on to somebody else, is he dumping that all in their lap? And they're gonna have to be responsible for, for painting over? Or is their city gonna have to be responsible for painting?
This is a National Honor Society legacy product from the project from the city, from Wayall Schools. So, this isn't just anything. This is a National Honor Society thing, as he explained to everybody. So, it's a legacy project. So, the National Honor Society took it on. So, as far as I'm concerned, once we, we make the determination what we need to do, either the city's gonna have to have them clean it up or we're gonna have to assist them or whatever it needs done to make it to what we want it to be.
Honor Society sounds good, but it doesn't look very honorable to me.
Were we responsible for signage in the original agreement?
I think it was Avery and Brian would work together on something and we just never heard back from Avery. I think he took care of the sign all by himself and it's out there.
Yeah.
I would think that, you know, as far as the labor aspect, if we are gonna paint over the north and south facing and maybe the walls extended, I would prefer that the city crews do that mainly from a safety perspective.
Yeah. Is that something that's gotta be painted over or can we blast that? Or, with a, there's gotta be a, okay.
And we've had experience doing that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I don't know what, what gang symbols are or what they mean or what a lot of these symbols in there mean, but they may be messages to and from, I don't know. You know, maybe Keith would know if there's gang symbols being used in there. I don't know if you've looked at them at all or not.
I, I went down there and took a walk through there. I didn't see anything that I immediately identified as the typical gang symbols that I used to see in my old jurisdiction. We haven't had graffiti down there in years. So, I wouldn't, I honestly, I don't know what the, the current gang symbolism is anymore.
I think I would define those as artist tags, is the way I would define what's down there now.
I, I didn't read every single word on the wall. I was down there this afternoon and I didn't see anything that was vulgar or offensive. But like I said, I didn't read every single one on there. I mean, I would, there are some pieces that I would think are a little bit nicer than other ones, but that's not for me to say.
I guess what I don't like about all the symbolization part of it is you don't know what it says. It says something to somebody or they want to paint it. So, I mean, you don't know if it's profane or not. You know, I, that's, that's what my biggest deal is with the, you know, with symbols and, and letters and numbers and everything else is that, you know, if, if it's not gonna be in plain English, it shouldn't be on. That's, to me, that's not art, but like, that's, that's my opinion. So, I, I, but I definitely think we need to relook at this, you know, with something as far as a council meeting goes, as far as, you know, needing to tweak it.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to abolish it at this point, but I do think we need to remove what's on the facing walls, the outside, so that that's.
Just put up signage.
And get some signage up there so that they know that can't be done, set the rules out, and go from there and we'll see what happens. If it continues, if they ignore the signs, then we have to do everything at some point, but.
We can't necessarily blame people for not knowing when we didn't tell them.
As far as, as far as the art goes, I have to admit, you know, as I think Jeff said, art's in the, I have to behold, you know, we can't all like the same thing. I mean, abstract, I have no idea what a lot of that is. But it sells for millions of dollars, so who knows? But, but yeah, I definitely don't like it on the outside, especially on the outside of the tunnel. Possibly that north wall, I don't really even care for that, but I'd probably be willing to go with it as long as it was done decently.
I think just, just starting out, maybe partially shame on us for not setting more clear boundaries from, from the get-go. But when you, when you go down there and there's no graffiti yet and you're told it's okay to, to do the graffiti, it, it all looks like one big blank canvas, canvas. There's, there's no boundary. I think once we go down there, we remove what's not supposed to be there. Going forward, there's, there's already stuff up. A, a person walks in, they're gonna say, oh, this section here has painting all over it. Over there, there's nothing. It, it, it should be more intuitive at that point.
Well, when we first agreed to do this, we knew it was a experiment. We knew it was an experiment, we knew it was gonna be a trial. Now, I went and looked at all our notes, our discussions, and we were not specific on where exactly it was allowed and where it wasn't allowed. So, as you say, Sean, it's shame on us. We should have done a better job. We should have required signage up before art was put on the wall. I think that's something that we can correct. To me, it's still an experiment and let's continue it through the summer. And if we can look at it again and say, do we wanna all cover it up this fall and not allow it, that's, that's an option. But, I mean, I, I've gone down there and saw stuff that I thought was fantastic art and then go down the next day and somebody's defaced it with what I thought was just numbers and scribbles. So, and we, we discussed that, we knew that that was gonna happen. The, the honor student that brought this talked about that happening. So, this is, I, I don't, the only surprise to me is that, where it went that we hadn't thought. But the rest of it, I think we knew it was gonna be some art that maybe we didn't agree with, didn't like. But art's a very personal thing. So, it'd be my desire to let it roll on with those limitations.
Can, can we get a vote on this in the next meeting? I mean, can this be published as part of the next council packet?
It could be, but just a little sidebar with Will is that you would have the latitude tonight to give some direction to council. If you wanted to wait for your next council meeting and some, you know, within a week after that, you're talking three weeks from now. If you wanted to basically limit the, the canvas as was brought up, we could do that tonight and probably get it painted before the next council meeting. Put a bright on the spot.
I'd still like to have it, you know, if we.
And we could get signage. Before we do anything, we need to get the signage. Well, and we can, we can paint temporary signage, no painting beyond this point.
Right. I'd like to see something like that happen tonight. And I'd also like to see it put on the next agenda as far as allowing it at all to have things change greatly between now and then. Maybe, maybe I, I would be in favor of this thing. But at this point, I feel like this Tina Asmus who wrote to the whole city council, I don't feel that this art wall is positive. It's graffiti and something I would expect to see in a larger city. And I won't name the city she put on there. I think this art wall reflects negatively on Whitehall is not well suited to this area. My family come and visit me from Florida and I'm embarrassed to have her see that display. I just think it's, it's, it's not the right thing for a little town Whitehall. And it oughta be abolished. That's my opinion. Unless things change greatly between now and the next city council meeting, I'm dead, dead against this thing now. I gave it what I think was a, a chance and it's a mask. That's my opinion.
Steph, do you have an idea where? I think my feeling is we're, majority of us agree that it needs to be tweaked and continued.
Well, if I'm, if I'm hearing what I think I'm hearing, you would prefer, you would allow it to continue in the tunnel only. So, the bridge is off limits, the south facing wall is off limits, and the wall extended outside the tunnel is off limits.
Personally, I'm not opposed to the wall. My thoughts would be the two faces of the bridge and, and the tunnel. As far as the length of the wall, I have no problem with that.
I concur with that.
But now the bridge, obviously the, the bridge structure, I, I think is off limits, but the tunnel facing to the south, is that still acceptable?
Neither is the north one.
Yeah, not, not the bridge itself, but the left and right wall of the tunnel as you enter heading north.
I would say only, only as far as you can do without a ladder. Like, anything that you need to get up to do, no.
Depends on the size of the ladder.
I think we either gotta say yes to on the face or no on the face. I would say no on the face of the bridge, both, both directions personally. They've got a lot, they've got a lot of area with the tunnel and the tunnel roof and the wall.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
That's fine, that might be the most.
Some simpler, I think it's, Kiss for instance.
You're talking the north facing wall.
Both, both.
Correct, both faces.
Both sides on the south and the bridge on both the north and the south.
Yeah, essentially the bridge structure itself, other than underneath and then the wall. Essentially, we're only allowing the walls underneath the tunnel and the north wall.
The extended.
Other than that, and, and not the, the face of that north wall, which is, has already showed up. So, I think that's clear enough.
I'm willing to look at that in a couple of weeks. I'd still like to see it.
I would prefer that we have very visible signs made before we spend any time and money painting it.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
All right, well, let's move on to North Mayor's closing. Something I've been pushing for, for a long time. And I hope all of you got this review magazine and read through it and read the articles concerning downtown and how important it is downtowns. If not, I, I wanna read some of the articles. This was from the executive director's message of the Michigan Municipal League. He talked about, says, "The power of a city's identity resides in historic landmarks, public spaces, and cultural institutions. If the city is a body built by people, then downtown is its beating heart. Drawing people back to city centers through the creation of inclusive public spaces emphasize the identity and character of their local community. People-friendly streets can and should be an intrinsic component to a vibrant and accessible downtown. Downtown acts as the key defining feature of a community's overall sense of place. The downtown's walkability, infrastructure, events, small business, historic buildings, amenities, all contribute to the economic vitality of a community and region. It starts with the downtown. A vibrant downtown has a ripple effect that expands into the neighborhoods, corridors, and the region. Vibrancy attracts visitors, residents, entrepreneurs, dreamers, investors, and developers." I'm saying closing this street down and allowing it for public space is what this community should be doing. If we wanna have a vibrant downtown, vibrancy comes from people. People outside socializing if wanted. And the entire Michigan Municipal League agrees with vibrant downtowns. And that's what, I don't know if any of you were downtown last night and saw the amount of people that were downtown trying to maintain that small space that they're required to be in as far as the fetch area.
And to me, that's, that's the only thing that closing that street is going to benefit is fetch.
No, it's not, it's gonna benefit the community.
No, it's gonna benefit fetch.
And, and what's wrong with the, the city helping the business?
Nothing's wrong with the city helping the business. As long as they're helping all businesses. Now, quite frankly, I like fetch, don't get me wrong. I think they took an unused building, turned it into a, a nice establishment. Consequently, they knew what they had when they bought it as far as size. They knew what they were limited to. And I think the city has gone out of their way just giving them that sidewalk to give them the entire street that's gonna limit people from getting into that parking lot.
It's giving it to the community.
The commu, for, for people to go and, and drink at fetch. What else is anybody gonna use that for?
I wanna see a stage there for community development.
May I finish? We have, we opened up and we've got the promenade out there. I don't see how many people using it. That's what that's supposed to be, was supposed to be designed for.
You see it in the winter. They use it in the winter. The issue is, from my perspective, is we've got a promenade with no tables for people to sit at too. Sean and I went after, Sean and I went after the last council meeting and I showed him my ideas downtown. Now, if we don't like a total closure down there, there's, I did some measurements the other day after I talked, after you and I went down there. There's 80 feet from wall to wall. We have three lanes down there, there's no reason, and, and three, three or four parking spots. There's no reason for four parking spots. We have plenty parking in the back, both sides. We don't need three lanes. If we knocked it down to two lanes, rough estimate, it depends again if we decide to do one side or both sides. If we do the east side only, we got, we would have a 34-foot sidewalk on the, on the west side and there's already 22-foot on the fetch side. If we decided to even it up, which would mean we'd have to do two storm drains versus one, you'd have 28 feet both sides of sidewalk. Again, if we decide not to close that down, that is, that, as far as I'm concerned, is a great viable option. Again, the city has been lacking with the tables down there. There's no places for people to sit. People don't wanna stand around and drink, they wanna sit. And looking at, I had a diagram and everything else, but I just was running late. Roughly, if we, if we took that area back from fetch and I wouldn't do that until we had tables on the ground or we could put them in place, we would probably have to put about 18 tables down in that area. Both sides of the road, on the promenade on the back, people would sit there. I mean, they're, they're sitting at the, the table, the charging table. There's always people sitting there. Again, we're shooting ourselves in the foot because we have no places for people to, to congregate and to sit down there. The pocket park we're looking at and finishing or starting, that will have some tables, but you can have more than one place. My, one of the friends of mine that, he invited his, his class, he had your class reunion down there, and they ran into an issue with fetch because they couldn't buy liquor somewhere else and put it in that area because it was, doesn't meet the criteria for the, the zone. But if there's other tables down there, they could've done that. There's not tables. So, I, that's what I would do. I don't, I'd call it Phase Three and a Half or whatever we wanna cause it. I don't know where we're at, Phase Five. Five, okay, we could call it Phase Five. And then the other thing, as I was showing Sean, if we got rid of four parking spots on both sides of that pole area, people could drive around, we would never have to take the poles down and we could put up a, like a gazebo-type structure, put tables under that for people to gather. We just got no space down there. We got the space, we have nowhere for them to sit.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to have the conversation the other day because that was, that was really nice to be able to stand down there and look at and hear some of those, those ideas. And, you know, given that idea, if we could get by without that, that dedicated turn lane, if that road, like you said, could be two lanes, we expand out on both sides for pedestrian space and ideally, at some point, bring that area that is exclusive fetch now back into the total social district. Just because my thoughts are, if you're a visitor to the community, especially if you're not legally well-versed in exactly the rules of a social district, I mean, you don't know, I can, I can bring this cup of liquor over here, but I can't bring it there, but other people can sit there. I mean, just have the same rules for everything there would be a, a lot more simple.
I, I don't, I'm not, I don't think we should do anything less than the 20, 20 feet. And you should, it should remain open, but I agree, lose the left-hand turn lane, lose the, lose the parking and reconstruct that area. But I think it's important that we keep that open to the rear of those businesses along Colby as well as Mylins. They're another business back in there, so they deserve to have that access.
So, like I said, it'd be 28 feet.
A lot of people go in the bell through that.
A lot of those businesses are, they, a lot of traffic goes through those back doors.
Rear-oriented, yeah, for, for.
I'm definitely not in favor of closing the road altogether. I wouldn't have any problem with taking it down to two lanes, taking the three or four parking spots on the side, taking those out and making a wider sidewalk or just leaving it the way it is and putting picnic tables in there so people have a place to sit. I definitely don't think that, you're not doing the, you spent almost a million dollars building the new parking promenade area and then you wanna take out the main entrance to it. It just makes absolutely no sense. You know, you, everybody keeps saying, well, you can come in off of Division Street. Yeah, you can, you know, but how many people that don't live in the city of Whitehall know where that entrance is off of the Division Street, you know?
And that would be the only exit too.
Well, yeah, unless somebody comes up with some genius way to change the other way from one way, but, you know.
Well, yeah, unless somebody comes up with some genius way to change the other way from one way, but, uh, you know, I just don't agree with closing it one hundred percent. That's, I have, other than a few people on the council, I have never heard from one person publicly that is in agreement with closing that road. Nobody has ever brought it up before.
I've heard it from many, many people.
Well, I guess we don't talk to the same people from the same crowds.
I guess we don't.
Because I don't go to fetch, so I don't talk to the same group, so. I agree with, I agree with Dick that we've been over backwards to help out fetch and this helps out nobody but fetch.
Well, if we added top tables to both sides, you've got people that'll gather down there. And like I said, if we decide as a group to add tables and have them ready to go, like Sean and I talked about, to put on that side of fetch. That would be an easy, easy fix.
Yeah, as long, as long as fetch is, uh, temporary, permanent, whatever, goes away. And that's all to, that all goes to the social district then. I would be in agreement with that. But still not closing the road. The road still has to stay there and has to have two lanes at least.
And I think if we did that, if that space was appended to the, the social district, I, I mean, everything that they do down there now, they could still do.
Everybody could do. Mylins, Mylins people could do, grab a, they can use it, and I mean, Pub 111, I mean, I got a fetch for that too, so.
The only thing that would have to change is fetch would just simply put the stickers on the cups.
Yeah.
To comply with the social district.
And we would have, we would have our tables versus their tables.
Yeah.
I, I have a couple of points I'd like to make about it. One is, uh, did anybody talk to Bells? Did anybody talk to Mylins? What do these businesses think about this idea of closing the road into the parking lot back there? The other point is putting a bunch of tables down there out in the blistering hot sun, people aren't going to sit at them in the summer. If this is mainly for the summer. I went to, well, Hackley Park a couple of weeks ago for the Muskegon Heart Fair and the tables in the shade were at premium. There's no shade in that parking lot back there to speak of. And if you can't sit in the shade, they're, they're just not going to sit there in the sun. Like, I, I wouldn't for sure. I don't, and the picnic tables in the parks generally, people like to move them into the shade if there's shade available. Lots, a lot of people were doing at Hackley Park in Muskegon was tables that were sitting in the sun got carried over into the shade of trees. And that's where people want to sit. And if you've got a bunch of tables out there in the sun, people are not going to want to sit there. And I still think that the businesses ought to be contacted and asked for their opinion on closing this road. I, I agree with Scott completely, Councilman Brown, that, uh, you know, if we're going to do something to those lanes, it ought to leave two lanes open, one in and one out. Maybe that center lane to be done away with, I don't know. That's kind of beyond my scope as to directing traffic, but I think you gotta have, gotta have two lanes open, one in and one out there. And then what happens to the parking spots? And, you know, I think it ought to be even the amount on the east and on the west as far as extra room caused by the closure of a lane and, and taking out parking spots. I think that should be the same on both sides. That's, that's my two cents. So basically, I agree with you.
And what else?
I agree with Volstrom. I also have a fix for Pub 111 too, if you want to hear it. I think we ought to put a bump out in front of Pub 111 like they did down in Muskegon. It's roughly that one I figured out too. I got down with my measuring tape the other day, so. I got, I got the guy from the, I got the guy from the nail place to come out and said, he asked if he needed to move his car. I said, no, you're good. No, you're fine, bud. That one would roughly be, um, currently the sidewalk's fifteen feet and there's a ten-foot parking lane. If we put a bump out in that, we can run it approximately fifty, sixty feet from, and come around from the alley and run it down towards Pickens. It would take up like two and a half lanes. Put bollards on there for safety and then Pub 111 could put tables out there for their people and other gathering, anybody. Actually, we could put tables out there for people and then we could open First Street back up, because I know that is one of your things. We could open First Street back up that road. So, I don't know if it's feasible with MDOT or anything else, but like I said, it was a thought. It would give us roughly, uh, twenty-five feet of sidewalk there.
That's not our road.
We, we, we gotta.
MDOT has not been very.
No, but, but.
Friendly with us.
No, but we did get Phase, or the, the Phase Three or where Four or whatever it was down there built, so I mean, we, we should have some kind of push and pull.
I mean, those, those corners have bumps, so if they do it, some way it's allowed to.
And then bump it back, I mean, that's all you really need. And spaces for tables. I'd put bollards out there just for safety. That was just a thought. Like I said, I wanted to measure that up too, so.
All you can do is ask.
Yep.
If MDOT says no, then they say no.
We push our, we take what they say.
Yeah, and that idea is not necessar- doesn't have to be linked in any way to the other stuff we're discussing, so.
But it's another thought.
I'd like to see a traffic study on North Mirrors, because I don't believe that there's that much traffic on that road in or out. Show me, show me the numbers that say this is how many cars are going in and out of there. And I don't think it's that many.
How many have ever gone in and out of that parking lot in my entire life?
That's you.
I'm just saying. Go back and look in the parking lot and see how many cars are back there. They all came, ninety, ninety percent of them came in from North Mirrors.
You don't know that. That's, that's, you're just saying that. Show me the numbers. Show me the traffic study that shows the, the vehicles coming in and out.
Are you going to stop somebody from going there at midnight and going over the two across the road a hundred and fifty times every night for, because they want people?
Right now, you're not.
I've heard of that big dub.
If the. We don't, other than city there generally.
I don't have money for batteries for repair of the charger.
All right. So unless you got real numbers, you got nothing, but, but, uh.
You've got nothing either. You've got nothing either. You don't, you don't have anything that proves that nobody is using it.
I know people are using it, but I'm saying they're not using it that much and I, to my.
How can you say they're not using it that much? Are you there twenty-four hours a day?
Nope.
All right, then you can't say anything either.
So, give me the numbers. Why don't you want the numbers?
I'm not afraid of the numbers.
Oh, hey.
Like I said, I've lived in Whitehall since nineteen seventy-five and I have never gone in and out of that back parking lot any other way than South Mirrors.
That's, that's your personal history.
If the city council, as a majority, were giving serious consideration to closing North Mirrors, we could do a full-blown traffic study. We would look at, uh, traffic flows, it'd be all sorts of times of day as well as the weekend, looking at the three, um, egress and ingresses right now. But I'm gonna do a wag and say that that's probably going to cost you thirty, forty grand. It's going to take a while because you're going to want to look at peak summer as well as off-season and winter. But I, I'm getting the sense that there's not a lot of support even for the concept, so I would hate to spend the money if the numbers didn't matter, either way it went.
Can we just close off the center turn lane and that parking without doing any kind of a study if we decided to do that?
You could. I, I guess my concern with getting rid of the center turn lane is that you've got, um, at that intersection, you've got South Mirrors and both sides of Colby with two travel lanes and a left turn lane. It will throw off the traffic pattern somewhat, and I think if you do have some type of a larger event, you could get a bottleneck there if you don't have a left turn lane. With people waiting to turn left and everybody else wanting to go straight and right towards Montague, getting backed up a little bit. It's just overall better traffic flow if you've got the intersection, uh, travel and turn lanes matching. Not that it can't be done, but it just, from a general perspective, it's a better flow. You could get rid of those parking lots on the east side, which would expand your, your sidewalk. Same thing we did with, uh, the west side. All we simply did was get rid of the, um, parking lanes. And it made a wider, so, so there are options in Phase Six.
Any wags on cost?
Yeah, you're probably, a, a traffic study is probably going to cost you thirty to forty grand.
I mean, to do the, to do the work, we make a hundred.
Depends on the level of work. You know, if you're going, getting rid of the center turn lane and bringing the curb further out, that's going to be a lot more expensive than just getting rid of the parking spaces. And I'm not sure what drainage we have on that side.
There's one. One towards the back on both sides.
Yep. And it depends on, you know, where the underground structure is to bring out the drainage, drainage structure.
So extra, extra cheap is what you're saying, right? Couple bucks.
For Tifa, probably not cost prohibitive. But I, I wouldn't even take a guess at, you know, because again, what, what are the parameters?
Right.
Is it two lanes, two lanes with a left turn lane?
So if we did both sides even, we were only adding six feet to the fetch side?
Is it worth the money?
Is it worth the money to add six feet or just put that six feet on the other side?
Your money's coming from Tifa's then, the way it sounds, so it would be up to the Tifa board to decide if they were going to, willing to pay for that change or not.
From an initial perspective, yes. You have the authority to approve, reject, or amend the Tifa budget. That's one of your oversights over the LDFA, the Brownfield, and Tifa. And there have been times where council has approved, because they only meet four times a year, sometimes council has approved, um, some budget amendments. And we've gone back to Tifa and they've been agreeable to everything. Because for the most part, it's part of their plan anyway and their overall vision.
What's the possibility of not re-curbing and, and making the sidewalk bigger and just taking out the parking spots and putting up a, some kind of a fence?
Planners or something.
Yeah. And putting tables in that area. Something, you've got to have something to protect people in case a car, you know?
Yeah, fence isn't going to do it.
Yeah.
The large cement planners would afford protection, but that's going to take, they got to be big enough. So then you're losing the seating area with a planner.
And the concrete, what do they call those things? They're pretty.
Jersey.
Jersey. They're pretty, they're pretty big and wide and, yeah.
Real positive to look at.
That's what both City Grand Avenue and the City of Muskegon have done, is use jerseys, yeah.
That might be a temporary that we could do.
Open it up, but in a year or so, do that actual.
You got another step down. I mean, it's something we got to look at also.
It could be a, a pilot test.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, absolutely.
Throw something like that together, heck, a lot cheaper than redoing all the concrete.
Yeah, and like I said, we just, we need to add tables down there. We want people to sit in. Contrary to what Steve said, I mean, you can buy tables with umbrellas. You know, the, the plug-in table down there has an umbrella on it. You can buy non-folding umbrellas that would, these companies have commercial grade, so. There's options. They can't come up through the, not a nothing down there for them to sit on, so.
All right, so there isn't support for a total closure, but it sounds like there's support for partial. So let's move on from there.
Do we want, do we present with pricing options?
What? Yeah, what I'll, what I'll do is we'll talk to the city engineers and we'll go back to the Tifa board and present some of these ideas to them, see where they want to go with it. Now, when you say partial closure, you're talking a road diet?
Don't two lanes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Yes, the new terminology.
I don't even have any problem with leaving the three lanes and just taking up the, you know, just doing, removing the parking spaces and doing the curb bump out on that side to make the sidewalk larger. Whatever that gains us, I don't know what it is, but ten feet, twelve feet, something like that.
Uh, ten, definitely.
I mean, that would, that would then give you an option to at least put, you know, probably three or four, you know, decent-sized tables there.
We can look at both and see what, see what they look like.
All right. Is that sufficient?
It is.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to playground fall protection. So.
Brian has been in contact with the representative from Game Time, which is where we buy just about everything. Not that they're the only ones. The, um, engineered wood fibers, because they have to have a special name. To put those under the play structure at Goodrich Park is going to be in the twenty-five thousand dollar range. To go with a port in place, you're looking at seventy thousand. There's always advantages, uh, you know, seventy thousand is going to have a much longer life expectancy, you can actually repair those. The engineered wood fiber, they, you know, from what I'm reading, it's almost an indefinite product, but it does need to re, re, uh, top off. About every three years. And then eventually, you know, because it settles, eventually you got to haul all of that stuff out because the stuff on the bottom is no longer any good. And they say that's like a five to an eight year for the bottom stuff. So those are the prices that we got, uh, for your consideration.
Is that similar to what's at G?
Yes, exactly.
We have a maintenance fix, like just going out there and going with one of those like sweepers on weed whip and sweep it back every month or so. Versus spending at least twenty-five dollars, thousand dollars on something.
Engineered wooden fibers, is that just a fancy word for mulch or is it something a little different than?
It's a little different because, and maybe Brian will correct me, no? There you go. They use more, they use more of the interior of the tree, uh, wood chips. We'll just grind up the entire tree, including the bulk, uh, the bulk, the bark. And it is, uh, if you will, polished so that there's, you know.
Sharp edges, slower.
Yep.
It gets you from three, thirty dollars a yard to three hundred dollars a yard, I'm sure.
So if you go to the school playground, that's what's in the school playgrounds.
That's what they just said is in G2.
That's what's in all the, the school playgrounds. And that's.
Which is?
The engineered wood chips, okay? That's fall protection. That's what we're, that's, that's what we're talking about. All right? If you look at the swing set at Goodrich Park, there is absolutely zero fall protection. If you look at the child's slide, there's zero fall protection. If you look at the children's swings, there's zero protection. If you look at the, the swings in funnel field, there's zero protection under the swings. The pseudo-fire truck climb-on thing has sand. So we've got essentially a lot of playground equipment with zero fall protection. Now, we could take that blue chips out of there, put them in funnel field where they're not going to migrate. And then we could get some wood chips and take care of these other areas that have zero fall protection.
I think the wood chips are just going to migrate just as much as everything else. I mean, if you look at school playgrounds and that, you've got, they migrate twenty, thirty feet. I mean, that's just kind of common with.
That's not what I saw at the playgrounds. I did not see wood chips all over. They were in the contained areas. I looked at them all. We still got numerous playground equipment with zero fall protection. Does that leave us liable? I believe it does.
I think we should work on the ones that need some protection and not mess with the ones that already have it. If we need fall protection at the ones at funnel field and some of the other structures that don't have it, we should try out these wood chip things in some of those places before we go and spend a whole bunch of money to replace. before we go and spend a whole bunch of money to replace these rubber chips down there on, underneath the play structure.
It'd be a swap-out.
Well, we could try it out at the other places and see how it works, if, if they, somewhere.
Ken, just two, two notes. Um, one is, uh, the mayor's right, there's a lot of, a lot of play structures that don't have fall protection. Most of those are older. Um, a lot of the newer stuff, we are putting the fall protection in because that's the way to go, plus a lot of them are grant-funded, which require, as well as ADA accessibility. The, the issue we had with the engineered wood chips is there's a lot more maintenance. Um, so that's why, 'cause originally that play structure was the engineered wood chips. And we just decided to try the rubber chips, um, to try and minimize the maintenance. So that's just why we went with that.
Has it minimized the maintenance?
Absolutely. And the ported place is almost no ma- well, I shouldn't say almost no maintenance. I mean, you will get holes in it, but you can, they have rubber patch kits. So the more you spend, the less maintenance you're gonna incur.
So if you're talking seventy thousand for that one area, and you're in the poured, uh, method, you're talking seventy thousand for just about every other area, add them all up, you're talking a million bucks to do all the play structures in the whole city. But, I don't know, that's, that's a lot of money.
You said the engineered wood is three years, they, you have to refresh after three?
Yeah, they say to top them every three years. So you're just laying another, you're, you're not doing much more than just putting... Like a lot of people do it at their home with the Cypress Mulch and just throw a nice fresh...
What's the added cost of refresh? Is it like ten or five thousand, or...
Well, it's probably about a third.
About a third?
Yeah.
That's kinda what I was thinking.
If you're doing it every three to five years, so you're looking at, you know, another eight grand every three or four years.
So at the end of the day, it's the same price. Either you pay seventy now and don't mess with it, or pay nickel and dime you throughout the ten years.
Seventy over eight years and...
Yeah.
Have the, uh, rubber chips had to have been refreshed since they've been installed?
Alright. We're short on time. Uh, just as city manager review, I emailed all the council members a form that has a, a review for city managers that I would like to use, take a look at it. It has a part for staff and, and the public, which I don't wanna use. I just wanted just the council to fill out that form and put their thoughts to it.
Turn it back to you.
Yes, please. With that, I'll open it up for public comment.
Hello, my name is Landon Montgomery. I'm from Mylins. Um, so obviously, just wanna talk about the road closure. Um, I agree with most of you guys on, um, what we can use that space for and better ways to utilize all of the money that was poured into it last year. Um, but I don't agree with the closure either. Um, I think that I am there every day in a, in a general manager way, so I see who comes from where and where they park and what those patterns look like, and it's not down to, to counting, but I do see them on an everyday basis. And, yeah, that back lot behind the secondary with Bells off from that division you guys said, it's an employee parking lot. That's what we use it for. That's most of the people that come through there. All of our main traffic comes from that front section. So, and every time we close it, like I know we just did for an event that was in downtown that hurts our business, because we're the only fully encompassed business in that parking lot. And so I just ask anytime we talk about the parking lot, if somebody like, uh, we had talked about Mr. Hubler said, like, reaching out to those businesses, or maybe it was Mr. Sikkenga, um, and just asking, like, uh, what that's going to do for the tax-paying businesses in your city before we just kinda make that choice based on a brochure, a pamphlet. So, um, that's kinda all I wanted to say as somebody who's directly affected by these kinds of decisions. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Crystal Davis, and I have a couple of things that I wanna say about the different topics we talked about today. Um, the road closure on North Mirrors, I do, my dentist is back there. I do go back there quite a lot and I see that closure being a problem. My concern is if we do go back, um, down that one way, there's no traffic light. I just see that being an issue with turning into that. If you, if you have to turn left to get into there, there's no way to direct traffic at that point. The same with if they're coming out Division, there's no traffic light there, so it's like I could see a lot of traffic issues. Um, so I would not be for closing all of North Mirrors down. The playground fall protection, I am for the poured rubberized floor. Um, I'm an occupational therapist. I work with kids, people with disabilities, and, um, having that poured rubberized floor makes it so much more accessible for little ones. And I think it would eliminate the issue with the chips getting into the, the splash pad. And I know it's a lot of money upfront, but I think it's an investment. And I don't think you have to think of it as we have to do that everywhere. I know those other parks, like Funnel Field, aren't used as much, so you wouldn't have to put that everywhere. But I think Goodrich Park is a heavily populated area for the kids to play, so that rubberized floor would be, um, better. And the art wall, I think it has a can of worms that was opened, and I agree with Mr. Sikkenga, and maybe thinking about undoing that. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Alright, we're adjourned for this portion.
Sure.
At six o'clock, I call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first up is the approval of the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Sergeant. And second is, any discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Agenda is approved. Next up is the consent agenda.
I'm moved for the approval of the consent agenda.
Sergeant. Then moved in second, is there any discussion? Question? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Consent agenda is approved. Next, this message from the mayor, council, and city manager. Start with council. Jeff?
Um, uh, I will have more information on the movies in the park next meeting, or next...
Work session?
Work session, yes.
Work session.
Yes, I have all that information. Like I said, I was running late in a class, so getting educated, so.
Okay.
I do have the numbers. Hopefully by then I will make it down to the township and see how they actually run mirrors. I haven't had that opportunity yet. Um, they're still doing that, so anybody that decides to go down there, if you could, before I do, give me a bump, jingle, let me know how it goes, let me know what you think, so. That's all I got.
Well, um, to further go on the city manager's review, nothing against Scott or anybody that's city manager. I would just like to see, I don't know if, uh, changing the city charter or whatever. I, I just think that since this city manager works for the city council, basically, that all city council members should have input into the city manager's review. And it's not that way right now. Your contract specific, you know, specifically says the mayor. And I think it, you know, instead of it even having to be an issue of anybody's contract, if it was in the city charter, that it was done on an annual basis and that all seven city council members had input into it, is the way it should be. Because with, with just leaving it at the mayor, the mayor couldn't review the city manager by himself without any input from the city, or from the rest of the city council. And, and you're letting one person run the show as far as the city manager goes. Just my thoughts. That's it. Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing else.
Steve?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing this evening.
Alright. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, I have nothing this evening either.
Alright. And we will move on to public comment. Is there any public wants to comment? No public comment. Do we have any old business to discuss?
No, sir.
Do we have any new business to discuss?
No, sir.
Last chance for public comment. Anyone in the room would like to comment on anything? Alright. Thank you for coming. We're adjourned.